Or.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you are. Okay.
Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay. So, welcome everybody to the special meeting Wednesday twenty eight of May. Special meeting to discuss potential changes to C D D three. If you would, Angelica, call the role.
Okay. Mister Agnes. Absent. Mister Alling, absent. Mister Anderson, absent. Mister Hirsch. Absent. Calligan, Mister Calligan. Absent. Mister Machio, absent. Mister Mortimer's absent. Mister Sadi, here. Mister Zahardis. Did I say that right? I'm sorry.
You'll see.
Okay. And Chairman Quish.
Here as well. And if you wanna introduce yourself for the record and David and
Stephen.
Stephen are here.
Angelica Camerano is the recording secretary.
Thank you. So this was advertised as a special meeting. We do not have a quorum. But we can still have our meeting and our notes will still be in a, in a, in a record. We won't have any votes that will have any bearing, but if we wanna add something to an agenda, we can discuss and agree to it and then then we can put that on a, either another special meeting or a or on our next regular meeting, however that works out. So the topic of discussion is how to promote economic development in the C D D three zone through zoning regulation changes. One of the things driving this is housing and housing options so that will address affordability. Access. I mean, we're getting close to the, to a transportation oriented district. As we move from west to east in the C D D three. C D D three goes pretty much from McDonald's down the Post Road to Mister Max on Bridgeport Avenue. And then that strip mall across the street from Mister Max by the hospital. There's a few major pieces of, of real estate in play there, potentially. We have the former Stop and Shop, former Milford Rivet site, Stop and Shop, most recent tenant there. It's vacated, very large piece. Across the street, there's sort of an abandoned, used to be, I think Fairchild trailers. They had like pull along trailers and RVs and that kind of stuff. And there's a junkyard. So it pretty much borders on the railroad track going west to east. Sort of to the Dorth or to the left side heading towards Milford Center. And then it borders on some various residential districts on the right side of Bridgeport Ave. Some multifamily, some dead end streets that sort of dead end at the property at, at the zone, at the zone change.
I can pull up, I can, if I need to, I can pull up some maps if you want.
Yeah, might as well, right? We could take a, take a look.
Yeah.
Sort of what my hope is tonight is to sort of create a kinda like a spreadsheet. Sort of things that we wanna encourage, things that we do not wanna encourage. Rather than trying to get too deep into the language, but just get some higher level ideas. And and then I think possibly have a a public info session where we generate some kind of direction. And then have the public come in, you know, whether the, the stakeholders that are actually in that district or nearby, or just have an interest in what goes forward. If everybody agrees that we leave it alone, then that's what we should do. We should leave it alone. If there's ideas where we can make improvements for some economic stimulus, then that's probably would be the best outcome.
But here, I don't know if you can see the map. Hopefully you can't.
You can't, David.
You can or can't?
Yes.
Okay, good, good, good. So the C D D three runs from here, which is McDonald's is right here. And the off ramp, Buck or Devon comes down Route one, comes down Route one, and then on to, you know, Bridgeport Avenue continuing and stopping pretty much exactly where Jim said it is with the Plaza and Mister Max right there. Yeah, the, the zone itself, just for some background, currently doesn't allow any housing. We kind of have a little crack in that now because the board did approve the Bethel Shelter moving into this district, which I believe is right about here. And so there'll be, you know, housing support services and, you know, short term housing related to, you know, the activities of the shelter. But other than that, there is, you know, no, no housing. It's, it's currently prohibited by our regulations.
Can you pop up the regulations as well, just to make sure that we're not? Sure. It wasn't a door cracked open somewhere. I, I
David, what did, what did we do with Kmart, though? Isn't, wasn't, didn't we approve something there?
Different zone.
Oh, what zone is that? Two? C D D two?
That's C D D two.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that's, uh, no, let me think. I'm wrong. Am I wrong?
I think it's, I think it's right there, David.
That's right there. Yeah, there you go. Yes, we did. We did approve something there, but that was also part of a regulation change. So it didn't affect, I don't think it affected the whole zone. I think it affected
Right.
Parcels of a particular size.
Yeah, it was, it was cleverly
Yes.
cleverly designed spot zoning, which I'm not sure we did the right thing, but we did, we did, we did what we did. And I think that as I looked at that, it's probably best that we, with whatever we do, we just we get rid of the language that we put in. That was specifically done in two lifts by a developer or more than one developer. I don't know if it changed hands in the middle or what, but but if we come up with sort of a, a global solution that we should take that language out and let the, let the district wide language go throughout the whole district, make it consistent. So that's just a thought I have.
Yeah.
Play that, Jim, please.
Well, so what we did is we allowed housing.
Your email's up. I know, I'm trying to get rid of it. There we go.
Good, Jim, we're talking, we're talking about the Kmart.
Yeah, I, I, I was just trying to get a screenshot of, of all of David's email.
I'm having all sorts of issues here. Hold on.
So Robert, yes, so they, what we did is we allowed housing in a very specific set of guidelines. It has to be a certain number of acres. It has to, and then we put restrictions, had to have some affordability, had to have some renewables. I, I forget exactly.
No, no, I don't disagree. Just that I wanna make sure that's what you're talking about.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, that is what I'm talking about. And my thought is that that might have been ill advised, but, or might, I don't know if it was, but it could be the case that it's best for us if we're gonna change the rest of the zone to eliminate the language that we approved two years ago and make it consistent throughout the entire zone. And I would say at that point, we remove that restriction. I think the applicant wanted to stem off any any opposition by making it sort of this lot specific. Where I think we should do something that encourages some economic development. There's, I mean, there's a lot of blight there, whether it's the old Fairchild RV or whatever, trailers and, and there's that, there's just a bunch of stuff. There's that giant building that was, I think, light industrial on the left, just before you get going towards Bridgeport Avenue, towards Mister Max. We do have some light industrial there. Somebody's making flats and, and other stage related decoration that they go down to Broadway and go to movie sets and making sense. So it's kind of mixed now, and I think there's opportunity to include a lot.
Well, we can, we can certainly extract which is good about the Kmart regulation. And then fashion it to clone stamp it out across the rest of the zone.
I think that's exactly the best choice. Stephen, I agree. I don't think it was all terrible, what we did, but
No, no.
Yeah.
I mean, spot zoning is never good, but there's, there's, you know, there's a lot of good in that regulation. So we just need to take the stuff that can apply everywhere in the zone and clone stamp it out.
Couple of things that I thought of that would be if we were just gonna put together some kind of a Gantt chart or whatever on what we're trying to do, things that we'd wanna encourage would be housing and housing options. I think that mixed use is appropriate and, and I don't know if we use the same language as M C D D that we're getting. Maybe we don't do that, but mixed use, I think we have a couple of large buildings that potentially could have either maker space or light industrial. So you sort of follow along with what a lot of people are considering best practice in terms of you know, live, work, play. You know, you can get you know, that mix of housing and the, and the mix of either artist space or maker space or light industrial that might be a good adaptive reuse for even Stop and Shop, you know, without knocking that building down, you could add housing in the, you know, village-like housing in the parking lot and the actual retail space can be converted into either, you know, restaurants or, or recreation or you know, little boutique. I like to use the cliche of like, you know, somebody making leather belts or wallets, you know, some kind of a a maker space that encourages micro business. I mean, I think that, you know, small business in terms of the whole economy is less than five hundred million dollars in gross sales or something. We think of small business as the deli and then there's like micro businesses where people are producing or marketing things and, and the internet nowadays, but
I don't think we, I don't think we would wanna write something specific for the Stop and Shop lot because that's just falling into the same trap of, of the Kmart thing.
Right?
So there's a lot you can do with, with the Stop and Shop lot because it's so big. And you could put a little mini neighborhood in there, but most of those properties in that zone are, are nowhere near that big.
True. That's why, but you know, then you have across the street, there's that, I don't know, between the, the empty car lot and the Fairchild trailer lot and behind him, the the, the, the scrapyard. I mean, that could be, if you combined them, that could be, I don't know, thirty? Twenty-five, thirty acres?
Yeah, I mean, they're always
I mean, that, yeah, that's, you I, I think we should allow for a potential for somebody to either split up an existing use or combine some properties and create that a totally new new use.
So, so Jim, if, if, you know, your, your comments and Steve's are great. Maybe we can just take one step back and David, you give a little bit of a lay of the land because the questions I had are, do we have any housing at all on this strip? I don't think we do. And Jim has touched on, you know, what, what properties do we see? When we worked on the C D D two, we kinda had a little bit of a blueprint that was going forward because we had, we knew there was residential properties and the like, but we can just lay that out through the chair to David and maybe we're gonna get a different discussion also.
So what, what, what exactly are you asking me for? I'm sorry.
You know, the, the, I guess the first question was, is there any residential on there? I think that there isn't any.
Yeah. No, they're not only the, what the board is, is allowed in the Kmart site. You know, that was with, by that regulation, which is, should be on your screen. Hopefully.
We have, I'm just, but there is no, the point is, at this point,
Right.
there are no residential units on the property or, or mixed, mixed property that has any residential. It appears that would be something that we look at first.
Yeah.
Between C D D two and C D D three, that in C D D three, there is no thing housing is. Okay.
Housing is actually prohibited.
What, David, if you go, oh, never mind, I'm on the wrong zone, wrong street, sorry. Yeah, go ahead. So Robert, that's the short answer is that there's none now that exists. It is permitted only in the Kmart site, but it's not been built, so.
And then the second thing that I, I think that we would need some assistance from David, and we don't have, need the answer tonight, is Jim has alluded to certain parcels that, that may be developed. You know, if we can kind of set them down so we know that the Subaru place moved on a different section of the Boston Post Road. We have the Stop and Shop parcel of which Stop and Shop is gone, but there's still other businesses on that property. If we can kind of figure out where the large parcels would be that, that, and then Jim talked about a, a combination, you know, what we see, that if there's anything that we could do that would give a better answer to where we wanna go with this.
Yeah, so I mean, if it helps, I just, you know, hopefully you're, you're seeing the map. I just changed something. Can you see the map? Did it?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So so again, here's Bridgeport Avenue. Here's the Kia dealer. Here is the Ford and Honda dealer. Then this is Schoolhouse Road. So you have the underutilized auto lots here, the, the former GMC dealer, the Fairchild, the Junkyard. And the, the old Subaru, which is this parcel here, which one of the reasons why they, they moved is it's actually on a hill. There, there's a steep slope here. So, and then you've got the railroad tracks right here. So we have got some we have, we have some challenges because this is, this, this whole area through here is really, I, I think there's actually junkyards there. And it's, I think this, this zone may be, I'm not sure if these are pre-existing non-conforming or if, you know, they're there because they're actually allowed in the zone. But they're there. I think a lot of our opportunity it would, would be on some of these larger lots. You know, and especially the, the parcels that are along this portion of Bridgeport Avenue between the former restaurant that's on the the corner of the Boston Post Road and how did I do that? Yikes. Whoa, that's good. Don't know what that was. Well, sorry about that. I lost it. There we go.
It's good. Just hit escape.
Hit escape, huh? No, there we go.
Let's try, we'll hit escape.
Yeah, I'm getting escaped. No, it's not working. I tried. Ah, there we go. How's that? That's better. Oh, little rusty in live meetings. You know, the, I, I think there's, there's opportunity along here to, to, to do something. You know? I mean, there's opportunity everywhere, you know, and, and part of it is, and I, and I don't know that and I'm just sort of thinking out loud that we wanna necessarily focus on any particular property, you know, because I, I think if we come up with sort of the vision of, of what we want. And then, you know, depending on if you want to limit size or density to some degree or, or link it to a size of a property. You know, we, leave it up to, you know, the, the property owner to, you know, pursue something. I mean, again, it's like the C D D two. We wanna give them the tools to do something. And I think, and I'm, I'm gonna go back and look, we, you know, some of you may recall, we discussed this zone to some degree. It was last year or the year before. And I can, if I didn't have an analysis done of the parcel sizes on this one, I, I could, I could have that done, just like we did with the C D D two. So we know, we know what we're talking about. We know what the populations are, you know, how many lots are ten thousand and less, how many are ten thousand and more. If that helps in people's, you know, thinking and consideration for uses.
And I think this is probably the most ripe for development. We have some really big properties, that, that big building, and I forget, I think there's the Schumart was in there for a while, but just a corporate corporate headquarters and then the, yeah, there was a, just an awful lot of
This
I think it was a distribution center at one time. I don't even remember what it was.
I could, I could tell you some of the things that have been, if you're talking about this one here on on Bridgeport Avenue with the corner of Dorsey, which, you know, dead ends into the railroad. We've had, in there, we've had a lumber supplier.
Oh, yeah.
We had a, and that went to the board and that's where the landscaping came from that's there. There's some trees that are there. We had a auto parts distributor. They did body parts for your body panels. That was their, their big thing. I don't, they, they still might be there. I, you know, I don't know. And then
It's gotta be a couple hundred thousand square foot on the roof, I think.
It's, it's big. And then, and then this is their yard. I mean, this, this is, this is the property. I mean, this is the yard that supplies this.
And a little strip mall in front with the deli.
Yeah, Napoli Deli, I think, is one of these buildings here. This is the old car wash, which I'm not even sure it's open anymore.
I think one of the car dealers uses it exclusively for their fleet.
Yeah, and gee, they should probably come in and get some permission from you guys. And then this is the Broadway, the, the workshop that makes the Broadway sets.
Yeah.
They're made here and then they're shipped to New York. And again, you, you have to look at these, especially when you zoom in. And let me take the zoning off. I mean, you have, you know, you have a lot of room on these lots. I mean, you, you have you know, tremendous amount of land around these. And you know, I'm, I'm gonna say that most of that gray that we see is parking. And you know, what, what a, what a waste of valuable land. I mean, when it could have something on it that, you know, generates some economic good for the city.
And it would be nice, I, I know they start Stripe a bike lane. It'd be nice to I don't know how much we can, how much we can do for encourage more walkability, more bike lane on, you know, on, on one property. And if it doesn't get, you know, nothing else gets developed, then you're sort of like, you know, twenty feet of sidewalk going nowhere, but
Oh, yeah. And we, we would, we would have to work with D O T. Because, you know, Bridgeport Avenue clearly has the, the width to support bike lanes. And, you know, in, in the, in the scheme of things, you know, I'm sure D O T looks at this and goes, well, you know, why would we put in, you know, pedestrian amenities and, and bike amenities when this is, you know, the reason, like, you know, when this is just a pass through, no one lives here.
Right.
So, you know, having, having people live here, you know, just supports a case to like, let's, let's, all the things that you want, you know, to, to make it more pedestrian friendly, to make it more bike friendly. You know, because right now it's, unless you're going to one of the particular businesses here, I mean, you have, you have no reason really to be there. And especially, you know, after five. You know, a lot of, most businesses, you know, close obviously at five. So yeah, this, we, this, this, I agree with you. This, this is the zone with potential. I mean, it's got a lot of potential. It could be a lot of different things. And you know, is really, I think, underutilized, you know, at the moment with, with what's there.
Dave, when the chair was talking earlier, he said that basically came to that split. Oh, okay. He's talked, Mister Max is down by the hospital. It's not the okay, I'm my mistake. Ma- Mister Max is down by the hospital.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, the, the one that was on the corner was a different food establishment. Okay.
Right.
The, the reason I'm saying that is that I have the an earlier version of these zoning regs. And they consistently refer to enhancing the section of U S Route one. And they also called the Bridgeport Avenue Design District, but obviously a large portion of this is on Bridgeport Avenue. It's not on U S Route one.
Right.
But U S one is Bridgeport Avenue from from the bridge all the way to the fork at the former Phyllis's.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this is the former Phyllis's right here.
But again, it's just one thing I picked up on a purpose that we probably should include Bridgeport Avenue, if, if we think it's worth it, but just something I picked up.
Um, what, what, so just as blue sky in it, as I like to call it, what, what what should we hope to promote or, I guess promote is a good enough word. Again, I had my list of housing, mixed use, some mixed space slash light industrial is connectivity to M C D D somehow. And recreation. So we kind of, if we can get some developers interested and have some recreation or sort of extend that restaurant entertainment vibe that M C D D has and let it you know, leak a little bit to the southwest and sort of just make a larger downtown vibe.
Yeah. So we have, we have, we sort of have a hump to get over to do that, though. And that's the, I call the M C, I, I, I just coined this the M C D D hump. Because, you know, have all those fun things happening in the M C D D down, you know, down here. And, you know, this is, this part of the M C D D is hardcore, you know, offices and the hospital.
Right.
So you know, again, you, you sort of look here, all small properties, your houses that are, some of these are still houses, some of them are offices. And then, you know, then you get into, you know, clearly more commercial and industrial, which is what the, you know, C D D three you know, was, still is. So, yeah, but, you know, it could have, it could have any, any character you want. You know, the character comes from, comes from the regulations. And, you know, again, I mean, the nice thing here is you have, for the most part, larger parcels. That
Live work might, might blend in pretty good there.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Stephen, louder, please.
Live work might blend in pretty good at that, along that strip. As you have, you already have enough work there. So if you put in artisans or something like that, that would blend in, it would be almost like M C D D plus or something.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, one of the things we can look at, and I think, I think the chair, you even, you even mentioned it at a previous meeting, was, you know, what, what if, you know, this was turned into the M C D D, just extend the M C D D down. You know, it would probably be slightly different than the current M C D D, just because there's some other you know, uses that are there that currently aren't in the M C D D. But, you know, it's, it might be worth taking a look because we may
Yeah, even, even just by naming it like, like Stephen hinted at, M C D D plus or M C D D something, then it becomes part of the
Exactly.
the narrative that and, and it would be different because I think that we have you know, multifamily zone right, right there next to it. So to have you know, to have the requirement that you don't, that it has to be mixed use and, and in first floor or street level cannot be residential. I don't know if it's that important here, especially when you have these larger properties that could have you know, many buildings and, and different uses and, you know, either cluster or village feel or village plus. You know, yeah, village plus. So it'd be, it would be, you know, that mixed use, but it could be building by building, not necessarily in the same building. There's, you know, you could have so many different pad sites and different housing options on a couple of those larger properties and and it could be the case that, you know, just a good old apartment slash condo building. I think that one instinct, I forget which board member brought it up, but that somehow if we can encourage if we can encourage ownership, maybe another carrot. I know that the developers have not done much condo. They've done apartments. They like the cash flow and whether there's an appetite for it or not, I don't, I can't really speak to, but one thing I'm confident that it does, the ownership does create roots and creates some kind of, um, connectivity that apartments don't, right? You know, you have a one-year lease or a two-year lease or whatever, but if you buy something, you're more committed. And if we, there's a carrot for the developers, then then we have some of that. And I think that that's something that would be popular among the residents because most of the residents here are property owners and they have made that choice and, and, and have, have believed that that's, you know, the American dream to buy property and own it and then you can sell it and, and again, as we know that housing's gone up in value over the decades that we're creating wealth for, um, for our constituents, you know, with opportunity for development here as well as some ownership and I don't know how popular it's been for the, uh, condo ownership of offices and stuff like that. I know there's some of it or I know they tried it down in, in West Shore with you live up top and you own the store or the office down below. I don't think it was successful. I think it was a struggle. And never proved to be, uh, something that worked out there. So that's probably not, that's probably a lesson we should learn. Don't do something that didn't work somewhere else and hoping it'll work. But somehow to promote ownership, I think, whether it's this zone or and other things we start to address could be, be valuable too.
I, I agree with all the things that you've said about what home, homeownership creates and all of the importance and, 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 uh, the, uh, uh, and, and, you know, investment in the community. Uh, but the, the problem for us, uh, is that, um, we cannot dictate the type of ownership towards own regulations. We can't do that by statute.
Right.
We don't have the authority to say, oh, we're going to create a regulation uh, that says you can only take advantage of this regulation if you have, you know, X kind of ownership or Y kind of ownership.
Oh, I thought we discussed it and thought that we could have a carrot.
Oh, no, that's, that, there was a board member who brought that up, um, fairly recently. I believe it was, uh, Aton. Um, it, uh, and I don't remember what the, it was the discussion of the C D D two.
Okay.
The night of C D D two that was brought up. And, you know, I, I had to say the same thing, you know, at that time is, you know, we, we can't tell someone how they should own or not own their property through the zoning regulations. If for some reason our zoning regulations, uh, are such that, um, there is some way that a developer looks at that and goes, wow, gee, um, it'd be better for me to, to sell these just because of market conditions or the density that's there or whatever. I mean, I, I don't know. But we, we as a board can't have in our regulations saying, oh, here's regulation A for you if you sell the property to people and O B, here's a regulation for you, um, if you don't. Because it, we don't, we have nothing to do with ownership.
Right, right.
Yeah.
One thing I think that we, that I think might be good to is to encourage, um, hotel.
Yep, that's, that's a land use. Yeah, if you.
Yeah.
That's something you want. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we.
That brings in, you know, if you, if you get, if you get the hotel, that somehow, you know, we give, obviously hotels like to go tall. Um, then that becomes purchasing power for the deli or for the restaurant or for the, uh, for the theater or for the indoor golf range or, or pick, pickleball court that turns that they've turned the grocery store into or something, you know.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, I mean, um, we only have hotels, uh, really, it, uh, basically the junctions of, uh, ninety-five, you know, on Old Gate Lane, you know, we have, uh, one, um, uh, on Cherry Street, you know, opposite, uh, the, uh, the Genesis dealer and then, you know, Schoolhouse Road. Uh, yeah, we, we, we don't have anything, uh, we don't have anything downtown, but we do have, uh, the ability for, uh, to, to have, um, you know, Airbnbs downtown. Um, um, not, not Airbnbs, but, uh,
Guest house, Rainbow Garden.
Yeah, yeah, B and Bs, you know, breakfast and, yeah, yeah. Uh, we do, we do actually call that out in order of regulations. Uh, but yeah, I mean, what you're talking about, I mean, I, I, there's probably, uh, there's a lot of opportunity. I mean, there's definitely, I think, the land and, you know, some of these buildings, uh, that could, you know, perhaps be, you know, reused. As long as the use, as long as you, you know, come up with a regulation that allows it, you know, hopefully they will come.
So if we can create a list of things that we want to encourage and set up either a special meeting, I think, you know, an in-person meeting and have it be a public forum, not a public meeting, but how, whatever language we use and make sure we invite, um, some of the the usual suspects in terms of developers and possibly, um, some outside developers that we have reach it to to come and just give their ideas, maybe, uh, they'd use professional, uh, development company or, I don't know, just, I think that was, that was a mistake we made and I did kind of sense we got some pushback by not having a public session on C D D two. Um, and get, I know like All In For Milford had a meeting about C D D two the week after. We, we already finalized it. So it, and I know we had a lot of discussion and we invited people in general um, just to talk about the, the whole citywide stuff and housing, but you know, maybe if we have a another special meeting or we have put it on the agenda for a regular meeting where we have a public engagement session, um, to just hear from stakeholders and just the general public on what they say. I think we should have some kind of a framework, some kind of a, um, you know, cut and paste from some other town with a best practice or a cool idea and then some of our thoughts, um, from the board, we could have uh, sort of a groundwork for for people to think about and come in and, and not really like a full-on charrette, but just get a feel for what the public would like to see. Once they understand the kind of breadth of the opportunity. I mean, there's really a huge amount of money that could be invested in this area. I mean, it's just, there's big properties, like you say, David. I mean, these are, these are not small things, lots of jobs, local jobs. Anyway, I'm excited about it. Um, anybody else have instinct on a, a good next step?
So Jim, what I, I talked to the, the group before you came in and I, I told them that I had seen in the news. Uh, there was a bill passed by the House of Representatives HB five zero zero two, and I actually just looked up the couple of the articles on it. Some of it has to do with a number of units that are going to be required for each municipality. And whether this is the correct number, because there's a lot of debate on it. Claims we have about twenty-four thousand housing units, but we need to come up with four thirty-seven more. Uh, again, that has to go to the Senate and it has to be passed by both chambers and then signed by the governor if it's, if it is, uh, passed by both chambers, but just, you know, it's something that we had heard about some time ago, but it happened this week, just mentioning it. Um, Steve has some knowledge of about a parking issue. So we should get an idea of what that says too. And is that something that's going to apply to whether we look at one district or the whole city? Don't have enough information, but I just.
No, I appreciate that and I am aware of it. I remember it was brought up. And I think that we are being proactive, not reactive. Um, so I think that whatever we do in this district and as we go district by district, um, will, will far exceed any any bottom level limits that are required. So what's the instinct to, to, what's our pipeline, David, looking like for the first meeting in June?
We, we have a, uh, we'll have a busy first meeting in June. Ju- June is going to be a busy month. Um, uh, you're, one of the items on the, uh, agenda, I think it's next week. Yeah, it's next week is the first meeting in June. Uh, let me, let me do this. Let me.
Yeah, so I'm pretty stink coming up again, David, which is probably going to take a lot of time.
Uh, yeah, Daniel Street is on, is on the agenda, but let me, uh, let me get to my files this time without, uh, sharing, uh, everything on my computer with the.
Yeah, get ready to take that screenshot of the email list.
I know, I know. You know, it's, I, I learned a lesson tonight because there's actually three screens in front of me and I was looking for the controls to do stuff. And it was on the screen that I never go to and there it was. It's like, why are the controls there all of a sudden? So let me, uh, let me look here. So so the meeting next week, uh, we're going to have, um, fifty Daniel Street, you know, which is a special permit to allow, um, outdoor entertainment. Uh, we're going to have, uh, two eighty-two Quarry Road, which is a special permit, uh, to allow an indoor soccer use, uh, over on Quarry Road, uh, and also an office use, but, um, the special permit part is these, is the soccer use. Uh, and then we're going to have at the moment, uh, seven oh eight Boston Post Road, uh, which is a special exception uh, to create a, um, uh, basically a daycare and learning center.
Where is seven oh eight?
Do you know where the, uh, new dental office is that's across from the off ramp from the connector? Um, so if you were taking the connector to the post road from, from, you know, the Parkway or ninety-five and you get off on the post.
So it's across from Gigi's?
Uh, diagonally across. It's on the other side of the overpass.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So there's a large dental office on that, uh, it's the old Starlander Beck, uh, building site.
Okay.
So that building's gone. So, yeah, that's where it is. Uh, but it's, um, a, a daycare facility for a hundred and sixty children. So it's, uh, it's a two-story. It's, it's a large facility.
New construction?
New construction, yes.
Oh, cool.
Yeah. So right now that's, that's scheduled as well.
So that won't be the good meeting and.
Yeah. And then the following meeting, um, you'll have, um, another popular, uh, I, I have, I have four things that may be going on to it, which, uh, but the one thing that's definitely going, uh, will be, uh, eight forty-three North Street, which is the proposed eight thirty G, uh, way up North Street that's got, uh, forty, either forty or forty-four, um, townhouse, uh, style, uh, units.
By the golf course.
On the golf course, yes.
Okay.
That will be, that'll be, uh, just that item alone, I think, will be busy.
Really?
Uh, well, uh, the.
Yeah.
It was, it was busy for inland wetlands. Would it be busy for us? I don't know.
Well, that's probably a good cage.
Yeah.
If, if they'll, if they'll put their slippers on and go out in force for, uh, the inland wetlands, they might do the same.
Yeah.
And the first meeting in July is eighth?
Uh, let me look. I think it's, I think it's earlier than that because I think the way, I think it's, I think it's like the second. Hold on.
Sure. Looks like the first, David.
Oh, oh, okay. It is, yeah, the first. Yep. So that's Tuesday, the first. So right now, um, I don't have anything scheduled for that. And the, the items that, uh, uh, that are sort of sitting in place for the meeting on, uh, the seventeenth of June, uh, there, there's one possible eight thirty G, a small one. Um, and then there are some cams. So if, if they're ready, then, uh, you know, it would probably be then July first. So it's, yeah.
Where's the eight thirty G, the small one?
Uh, on Nogatuck Avenue. On Nogatuck Avenue, uh, the, uh, the, uh, bowling, uh,
Oh.
The bowling place, the bowling pin, the duck, is it duck pin or candle pin?
Candle pin, yeah.
Yeah.
I wonder if they are aware that it changed and they might change their change their plan to accommodate. Anyway, we don't have to push that. I'd rather get them to get them, the, the more, the more the merrier in terms of the percentage of affordable, so.
Yeah, yeah. And, um,
So let's, uh, let's, I, I, I kind of don't want to wait till the summer's over, so let's just, uh, give it some more thought and see if it might be a benefit to have a I don't know, I'll think about it. Special meeting and I, I'm not sure I, if, if I'm traveling for the whole month of June, so I likely won't be here for the second meeting, um. I don't know about July, but we'll just I hate to put it off forever and ever and ever, but um,
Yeah, but, you know, um.
We could do another, we could do a special meeting, public engagement remotely, and I don't know if that's
Yeah.
Worth it even. Will people show up? Will they care? I don't know.
Well, I would, I would assume All In For Milford, who, uh, is very concerned about, you know, housing stock, you know, I, I would think that um, they would, uh, participate no matter what the forum.
And we get a developer to maybe, um.
Yeah, we can, I can put feelers out. I mean.
And you never know, some of these landowners might have an interest. I mean, I don't know. I, I think that Fairchild site's been for sale for a long time and this could be something they'd come in and advocate for because there's not a lot of uses for that type of property.
The, the properties there are also, they have a challenge. Let me just see if I can pull something up on the map here. Um, so that is.
It's a big, it's a big grade change, right? From the road to the railroad?
It's a great change and I believe it's a flood zone. Um, because there is flooding back there. Let's see. So there's, so there's, there's wetlands. So this is the CVS. This is the GMC dealer. I think this is Fairchild. Uh, and, uh, actually, no, this, this may be U, UI. I think there's a substation back there.
Yeah.
That's what this is. I used to, uh, I used, I used to have a, a pickup truck that I got at, uh, the, the old GMC dealer and I remember getting it serviced and, uh, there were times after a big storm where, you know, they used to store cars back here and they, they had problems because of, of the flooding.
Oh.
And this, the, basically, there's a reason why there's nothing any closer to the tracks here because this, uh, this all floods. Uh, or, or it did. It may be, it may.
Yeah, you would hate to think that they were building railroads where they're going to be splashing through a high tide.
Well, that's why, that's why the railroads, if you notice, are just slightly more raised and everything has been.
Yeah, lots of, lots of brick of brick.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, you know, and I, I, you know, I don't know the, the history of Fairchild, but, you know, I've observed other properties in the city that are um, that neither automotive or industrial uses that are, you know, abandoned and you go like, wow, how come this, this seems like such a great opportunity? And, you know, it turns out there's, you know, an environmental issue of one kind or another.
Well, I bet there's some some, some oil changes that happened around that whole area that weren't up to today's codes, but, you know, oil is comes from the ground. They know how to fix it. They know how to haul it away and whatever they do, burn it or whatever they do.
And, and that's, and that's where, you know, again, having zoning regulations that allow uh, perhaps more than what's there now, and then it becomes worth someone's while.
Yeah, financially viable to clean it.
To, to do it. Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody else have any instincts that they want to share before we um, figured about an hour is good enough for a special meeting? Okay. Well, I appreciate everybody for coming in and um, we'll keep to, keep beating the drum and find out if we can. I'm, I'm actually excited about this one. I think it really is an opportunity to, uh, I mean, it's not going to be overnight, but it's going to, I think, like, you said, David, it's, it's just. You said, David, is, is just giving the tools, right, to, to. Have some great change, you know?
Yep.
Um, a lot of blight, really, or underutilized anyway.
Under, underutilized and, and, you know, and why are things underutilized? You know, it may be some property owners will come out and, and share their experiences to why, but, you know, I, I think, uh, a, a good. A good guess, uh, would be that. You know, the opportunity isn't there for them under the current regulations to do something. Uh, you know, if, if everything is, is done through, you know, uh, market, you know, market-driven, uh, demand.
Great, well, thank you all, thank you, Steven, for coming, good to see you, Angelica, thank you for coming, Robert. Mark, and obviously the guru himself, David Sokas.
Oh.
Where is he?
I, yeah, I don't know.
All right.
Nice to see you.
Without objection, uh, we're adjourned.
Thank you, good night, everybody.
Good night.
See you next Tuesday.
See you Tuesday. David, I'll stay on for another minute.
Okay.
If we just wanted to review, um. So I'll, uh, clean up my minutes, I was typing as quickly as I can, I'll try to summarize it to one page.
Okay, hold on one second. Okay, just gotta get other people out.
Yeah, so I will clean up my meeting minutes, I'll try to summarize it to one page, I could show you what I have now, but it's a lot, um. And then I'll email it over to you.
Sure.
Okay. When do you expect this by, like, wha- how quickly do you want me to turn these meeting minutes over?
Uh, well, the, the, uh, legal answer is we have to have them. Uh, within seven days.
Oh, okay, I was thinking tomorrow morning.
If you wanna, you know, if you, if you're able to turn them around in twenty-four to forty-eight hours, uh, I, I'm, I'm a happy guy.
Okay, all right, awesome, I could do that.
Terrific.
Thank you so much, David, have a good night.
Thank you, you too, take care.
Okay, bye.
Bye-bye.